Okay, so we are recording in live, so whenever you're ready, we can start with the meeting.
All right, we will call to order the June 16th, 2020 Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission meeting. Jamie, do you want to do roll call?
Teri Steenblock.
I hear.
Doug Ramseth.
I hear.
Tim Gary.
Here.
Jason Steenblock.
Here.
Karen Moorhead.
Here.
Tim Miller. Betty Guyer. It looks like we might have just had them join, so let's just give them a second here. We're doing roll call, so Tim Miller.
Yes, here.
All right. And I think Betty's joining, so we'll just give it one minute here. And then Betty Guyer for roll call. Betty Guyer, you're here? Betty?
I can't hear you.
All right, so we're just doing roll call, I mean, it looks like we have Betty Guyer here as well. Sorry, I think you can move on then from there.
Yeah, I was just looking to see, do we have any open forum comments or questions?
Prove the agenda is next.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We'll look for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So, we had a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, do you want to do roll call?
Yeah, I think that'll be easier. Teri Steenblock.
Hi.
Doug Ramseth.
Here.
Tim Gary.
Hi.
Jason Steenblock.
Hi.
Karen Moorhead.
Hi.
Tim Miller.
Hi.
Betty Guyer.
Hi.
All right, now we can move on to open forum, did we have anything submitted, Jamie, for open forum?
We do have one open forum comment tonight, this is from a Forest Lake resident Samantha Banker. And I'm just going to read verbatim what she had provided. I am requesting that a basketball court be installed at Coolin Camp Park. I believe this would serve two neighborhoods located off North Shore Drive and 230th Street, as well as many other neighborhoods off of North Shore Drive. There seems to be a good deal of space, but the park is currently only set up with baseball fields and playground. Consideration of this request is greatly appreciated, thank you, and again, that's Samantha Banker.
Do we have any comments or questions on that?
Good idea, down the road a bit.
Yep.
Yeah.
It hits off on some of the basketball courts that the community has been asking for, so.
Yeah, I think that was one that we actually had a little girl come and ask for that, and I know we had it on our feedback list when we did that community feedback, so I think it's probably still on the list, it's just not at the top right now.
Perfect.
Any other comments or thoughts on that? All right, so then we move on to the regular agenda, and we have 5A, which is the park fees.
All right, so members of the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, one of the items on the agenda tonight is a conversation and potentially action on some our park fees for 2020 in light of COVID-19. Recently, at a Fenway Athletic Advisory Committee meeting, we were talking about fees and the challenges that the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association was having with lost revenue and participation levels are just down, and just in general, the COVID-19 pandemic is obviously taking a toll in across the country. So, we talked about in that meeting about waiving fees for that particular contract in regards to maintenance, and during that conversation, we had representation from the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, and it was brought forward that if we're going to waive fees there, we should consider waiving some other fees just to help out residents during this time and to really allow for our facilities to be used and keep things reasonable for people, so. Right now during, so that's why we're here to talk about this tonight, of looking at some of our park fees for our facilities. Specifically want to talk about our shelter and our gazebo that we rent out. Per the current executive order from the state of Minnesota, right now, outdoor social gatherings of more than 25 individuals is prohibited, so that was a recent change, just I believe it was June 9th that went into effect. And prior to that, it was only to groups of 10 or less, so our reservations have been significantly down this year, obviously due to the COVID-19. And things are just different, so people generally would send in reservation requests to plan a birthday party, graduation party, so, you know, family gathering, and we see quite a few of those throughout the course of the year. But obviously, we're not, we're not seeing that right now, and we wouldn't even be able to authorize those kind of events. What we are seeing, and what I'm experiencing, are a lot more phone calls about can we use a picnic shelter to have six people get together to drink coffee and visit, or you know, it's just like a small group of us want to get together, but we want to make sure we have shade for our, you know, sitting outside. So, obviously, outdoor spaces are better for social gatherings versus indoor spaces. So I think it's important, we want to encourage people to, you know, get outside and still have that socialization piece, and our parks can provide some space to do so. If they aren't a paid reservation, they are available first come, first served, so those small groups that normally would just maybe show up at the park would be using them anyhow, but this way, they could potentially have the opportunity to to know that they have a dedicated space for them for their little social gathering, where they would not have to pay a fee to do that. And I think that would be a nice service to the community, just to encourage the use of our outdoor space for those small group gatherings, more informal things that you wouldn't normally pay money to reserve otherwise, so. In reviewing all of this, you know, I think it's a nice service again to the community, and my recommendation was to consider waiving fees for the gazebo or the park shelters up to the four hours. So you'll see on here, we have a half day rental for the gazebo, it's normally $65, and that's anywhere from like zero to four hours, and then if someone wanted the park shelter for an hour or two, or anywhere up to four hours, we would consider waiving that fee. With this, all reservation requests must still be submitted online from our reservation request form. They'll be in compliance with executive orders and approved by the city, so what this does is it just allows those smaller groups to know that let's meet at Shelter A at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday, and they know they have some space there, so with that, if there's any questions or further discussion, you can take those at this time.
And Chairman, Chairwoman, so you're saying if I have a group of six and just want to get together and chat with my friends, I can just go up there and use any of the facilities? But if I want to make sure it's there, I'm going to pay $65 for like the smaller shelter? Or half of gazebo, oh no, it's $15, isn't it, for those little shelter things?
Correct, it's normally the shade shelters you're referring to is normally $15 an hour, so if you wanted to go with a group of friends and guarantee that you had that space, you would have to normally pay a fee to do so. And with this model that we're considering and talking about, you could still, you could reserve it, but we would waive the fee to do so.
That's a great idea, I like it.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
And I think we've had a lot of people using the parks a lot more, so you know, I think that those shade shelters are used frequently, so the first come, first serve is not as likely to happen if you would just show up at the park with coffee and your friends. So I think people are looking to kind of have a little more guarantee of being able to use a a shelter for a short period of time, and most of those have been an hour or two.
So you're looking for a motion that would allow the waiving of the park fees for the gazebo rental, the half day, and the park shelters, but it wouldn't change the other things, people would still have to go online and reserve it if they want to guarantee it.
That was a staff recommendation and open for approval or some modification of that if.
Okay.
So Jamie, it applies to anybody, even those who are not Forest Lake residents?
That's a question, good question, and I think to turn that over to the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, one could say Forest Lake residents only, so that it's servicing the community and taxpayers in Forest Lake, and then fees could be applicable to anyone who's renting it outside of Forest Lake. I think that's a good question, maybe we can throw that to the Parks Commission on consideration regarding residents versus non-residents. Commissioner Miller?
How would we monitor that, if everything's done online? Do we have the code written into the interface that would allow you to monitor that, or would that require then some level of your participation or someone else within administration?
In regards to managing the fee portion and waiving it and the processing reservation?
Well, yeah, just to waive the fee for the residents, if they, if it has to be online, I picture that they have to put a credit card in or something.
I'm sure, good point of clarification, so actually, our reservation system is not, we don't have full software and access to collecting reservation fees online, so really, when they submit a request, I get an email with the, with the organization or contact information, the date and the time, and then it's just a manual process of collecting payment, so I generally have to call or email them and let them know this is approved and you owed $60 for your reservation, and then they send in payment. So we don't collect payment online. The only administrative piece is, and it's really nothing different than we do now, if someone does put in a reservation, we can post a sign up at the park that says, you know, this is reserved for coffee group from eight to nine, and then another group for a private party from noon to one, things like, you know, and that's really something we do anyhow. I don't think that's a lot of additional time.
Okay.
I can see both ways, Doug, I think that's a great thought, and then I'm thinking, what if they come? And then they shop in our stores or buy the food that maybe they're going to eat there, I don't know, I can go both way on, both ways on this, I guess, so it would I don't know.
I guess, thinking about it, that I would, I would not charge anyone regardless of where they were from. It, I think, you know, we want to get people out, we want to have our parks used. I don't know that our parks are used, our pavilions and gazebo are used every day by residents, so I'm thinking that allowing anybody to use it for, at no cost for the summer would be good.
That makes sense to me, too.
Yeah, me too.
Do we have anybody who want to offer a motion?
I'm, I'm I'll second.
To accept staff recommendation in regards to park fees, and with gazebo rental for the half day being no charge, no charge, and also the park shelters will be no charge.
I'll still second.
Any discussion?
I love that clock.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Jamie, do you want to do roll call?
Yes, um, Teri Steenblock.
Hi.
Doug Ramseth.
Hi.
Tim Gary.
Hi.
Jason Steenblock.
Hi.
Karen Moorhead.
Hi.
Tim Miller.
Hi.
Betty Guyer.
Hi.
All right, so next on the agenda was 5B, which was the community events and program.
All right, so Commissioners of the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, I'll just walk you through this agenda item here tonight, so just a little bit of background and a lot of, you know, obviously you guys are all aware of it, but just due to the COVID-19 pandemic, unfortunately, we had to cancel Arts in the Park for this year. However, when we did that, we did talk about coming up with some other ideas of things that we could potentially run this summer safely and in, or in alignment with our executive orders from the state of Minnesota. So a couple of members from the Events and Programs Committee got together and did a brainstorm session, so feedback from three or four commissioners, and came up with a lot of really great ideas, there's over 40 of them. And also, thanks to Chair Teri Steenblock for soliciting some community input to see what the community would like to see this summer. So a couple of those ideas were added here as well. We compiled that list, and I went through an exercise looking at each of the items and had some guiding principles to help make some decisions on what we could possibly do and when we could potentially get that done by, so some of those were talking about access, is it accessible to everybody, would it be compliant with executive orders? And any MDH, Department of Health and CDC guidelines? If it's something that was already existing, if we had time to implement it, and if we had the resources available to do so. So I did include here, if you have the packet information in front of you, per the Minnesota State Guidelines right now, outdoor events such as movies or concerts in the park may take place, provided they are compliant, in compliance with the Stay Safe Minnesota Recreation Venue Guidelines. So I looked through that, because page six of that document lists quite a few things that I think would be relevant to us planning any outdoor community events this year. So I think it's pretty clear that if, you know, obviously you cannot exceed the 250 persons, you really have to maintain social distancing, they recommend virtual or online services as much as you can, like pre-registration. They request advanced registration of reservations, so getting an idea of who's attending in advance. Limit people coming and going, so that might even mean creating some physical, like temporary to the event. Encouraging high-risk individuals to not participate at this time, and posting signage at the entrances of your venue. So, those are some of the things we're up against as we look at doing some community events this summer. I think there's, there are a lot of great ideas, so thank you to everybody who contributed. So what I included here tonight is a summary of some of those ideas that I think might be feasible. I just want to note that this is a draft, these are, what you see doesn't mean we're going to necessarily complete all of these, but it was just a starting point for a conversation tonight, and hopefully we can work through and get some direction on how to move forward, so. I can share my screen if it's helpful for you guys to look through this document here, so let me just share my screen. The goal tonight is to talk about this, and then hopefully take an action to at least start move, making some decisions on some plans we can start moving forward with. So with that, I'm going to try to screen share here, just a second. Let's see. Okay. So, again, here's Marie again of events and program considerations, and what I did, just to kind of organize the work, July happens to be National Park and Recreation Month, so I thought that could be a fun way to focus on things related to getting out to the parks. We do know our farmer's market is going to kick off on July 6th, and I have some bags we can give away for that. One of the ideas was ice cream or freeze pop giveaway, and so July 8th happens to be National Freeze Pop Day. Be fun at this, at different theme parks where we hand out freeze pops. Communities through the COVID-19 have done a virtual fitness challenge, basic register, sign up. It's all kind of on our system, but it's, see if you can complete 30 miles of walking, biking, running, or whatever combination of physical activity within a given month, and you can earn a medal or a t-shirt or some certificate of completion. It's just encouraging people to be fit and active and get out and challenge yourself. A family, family bike scavenger hunt, so a list of things you got to bike to and take pictures of. Food Truck Tuesdays would be just a schedule of different food trucks at different city parks in the month of July, which could carry it over to August. Bean Tournament was a community request where you have teams, you know, limited to 10. We could kind of practice social distancing, have it be a few different weeks, and then it's just, you know, you finally get to your championship game. The We Are Parks and Rec is just the National Associations July Initiative, so that's their logo this year, so there's that hashtag and other things or activities we can do to just promote park and recreation during the month of July. And then we could also just incorporate a variety of different activities, whether it's art projects, you know, fitness events with the YMCA or other organizations, kite flying was one, nature walks. I just put a few there, but there were quite a few like things we could fill into a calendar for the month of July. So those are all things I think that we could, you know, pick some of these or most of them, or talk about that. But these are things that don't, shouldn't take as many resources and as much time to put together. And then just quickly, August are some bigger things, a car show at Lake Sedem Memorial Park where we can line up in the parking lot where there's just one flow of traffic. And you can vote each week on your favorite, and then we'll bring all the favorites back for one final vote. Forest Lake Flashback was just a weekly thing where we celebrate a different decade, maybe starting with the 50s, and have different fun things we do each week. A virtual trivia contest, I know Teri has some ideas on that with using different software programs. A drive-in fee, I know a lot of communities have done this, and it's been really successful. Night 2 happens in August, so we could kind of partner and come up with those, some smaller neighborhood events or activities. The 2020 Time Capsules, maybe we have, you know, craft supplies, and we give out time capsules that people can take home and decorate and fill up from their 2020 experience. And also Bingo at Belts Park was another idea, so just in, in in closing on this topic before I turn it over, there's also some things we still could do in September. I didn't list them tonight because they're kind of the regular things we do, like a park cleanup and Lake Fest, potentially some ship with the Chamber on their wine walk or wine tasting event. So there's a few things we could still do in September, but I thought our focus should be July and August, because that's when we normally would have arts in the park, so. Lot of occasion, but I guess tonight, I'll turn it over for any discussion, and if there's any way we can get some direction from me on what you really like and want to move forward with, then I can, can get to work on that, so. With that, we'll turn it over for discussion and any questions you have.
Jamie, do you mind flipping back so we can see everyone?
Yep, one second here.
Thank you.
I apologize because I couldn't make the meeting that you were talking about, but I did submit an idea, I don't know if it went out there to the group or not, but if some friends were saying that if we would either have just canned music or one local performer, and then designate family picnic night, that they would bring their own picnic lunches, listen to the canned music, but they would have to distance themselves, and we have a big park, so if there are not a lot of vendors and things walking around, they could just sit with their families and socialize, at least being out in Forest Lake at the park. You'll like that one better than my silent protest, though we can have 3,000 people, so. At least I got that one out of my mind.
Thank you for sharing that, I didn't have that on my list, so I can, we can certainly put that on there.
Jamie, I would say the farmer's market, the food truck Tuesday, and the bean bag tournament, I'll align with any feedback that we got for ideas on the Forest Lake, we got a lot of feedback. But those were specific ideas, so I like them from the standpoint of we can go back to the community and say, you know, we asked, and these are three things that we, we could do as a result of your feedback, so.
I thought that the virtual fitness challenge and the bike scavenger hunt, really good ideas, get people out, and there's no congregating involved, and so to me, we could do that both July and August.
Yeah, I do also like the bike scavenger hunt, that, that, that sounds like something that might be kind of fun for people to get out and do.
I'm wondering if we could challenge the city of Wyoming to a virtual fitness challenge and show them how amazing Forest Lake is.
That's a great idea.
I like it. I, I think, you know, all these ideas have merit, I also seen a lot of food truck requests. The, the movie in the park was another big one that I seen too, so. I appreciate everyone who worked on this, thank you, sir, you couldn't be around for it, but in regards to an action, Jamie, and what kind of we're looking for, for a motion, I mean, would it be to give you the freedom to work through this, or I mean, do you need individual items that you would need a motion for, or how are you looking for this?
I think, I think just support in what we brought forward here, I think would be sufficient to move forward and use staff discretion on any further items for this. I don't think, looking at the list again, I, I just think we have put a good amount of time into it that nothing really stands out as being a pretty significant financial budget item, and everything, it would fall within our approved 2020 budget, so I'm authorized to make those purchases as needed, so just some support, if there's anything you'd like to, you know, for sure not to do, or don't like the idea. Especially with July, I feel pretty comfortable moving all of those forward, or most of those, and August, I think I'd have to maybe come back with some things on the car show. But I think your support, and if you, if you like what you see, and feel, would be receptive of it.
Say, Jamie, could those, could that food truck Tuesday, could that be a regular scheduled thing, I mean, do we have, you know, three or four that would show up every Tuesday from now until, you know, Labor Day?
Yeah, so just to elaborate on that, I feel like my intention with that, and what we've talked about, would be I have probably six to eight food trucks that would be interested, thinking of our arts in the park vendors. One of my trucks actually said they've seen a lot of neighborhood food truck events, and it's been really popular and well-received. So what the plan would probably be is make a schedule for July and pick three or four of our different parks, and say, food truck A and food truck B are at Belts Park on this, you know, on Tuesday. We've got food truck C and D at Coolin Camp, E and F are at Cedar Park, so just create a schedule, so we can just put it on our website, and people can choose what food truck or park they want to go to. And that's something that could be sustainable then for the whole summer.
Yeah, I like that idea of a couple of trucks, and maybe, you know, two parks a Tuesday or something, just, you know, so people could move around, and we can introduce everybody to the 25 parks we've got.
Yeah. I didn't hear a lot of conversation about the suggestion that I had, but it again came from some of the feedback I've been getting, so I was just wondering to hear some, this is why I would be in favor, or why I would not be in favor, so I can go back and chat with the folks about the family picnic and the canned music, or one, one performer.
Tim Miller.
A bit earlier, I was going to comment, I like, you know, all the ideas here, but I also like Commissioner Moorhead's idea of having some sort of music if we can and keep it over the 50. I like that idea, Commissioner Moorhead.
Yeah, I think the key with that, I think I don't have any issues, and I'm just referring back to the Stay Safe Minnesota recreational entertainment venues guidelines that we'd have to follow. I think so long as that it's not drawing a crowd and people aren't congregating. You know, I think, I think it would be, something like that would be something we could do.
So Jamie, would we do a, would we do a registration for that, or how would we to ensure, or pick a band that, I hate to say it, isn't really popular? That would be my, my only question is, I think we have to have a way to either allow people to sign up ahead of time, so that when they get there, if we're over limit, that we're not rejecting people there, although we still potentially could, but at least we'd be able to say. this was a sign up event and we're at capacity or.
I, yeah, I think, I think what I know what we don't have resources to do for Lakeside Memorial Park is to bring in physical barricades to control that environment of one flow of traffic, you know, where you have one entry point. And, you know, only let a certain number of people in, but if the concept is picnic in the park, messaging is you bring your blanket and you bring your dinner, find a spot that's socially just, you know, six feet from somewhere else, that's your spot. And we would probably just have to have one staff there that if, I mean, there is a lot of green space, so you might have to spread out a ways. And be in a position where you're not all congregating in that center circle area.
And I was thinking canned music, so it wouldn't be something that everybody would be dying to come and see as a particular band.
I think to position it as a picnic in the park and not as much of an emphasis on like the performance and the music piece, so that would just be background. But if we position it as picnic in the park, bring your blanket and family out for dinner, find a spot socially distanced from others. I think that would be easy to do. As the music is just kind of a local group that isn't going crowd where you're going to sit there like it's a concert.
Well, yeah, the other thing would be just, you know, run like, you know, Pandora or Sirius or something, you know, through an amp system, you might be able to pick up from like Music Connection or something and just have, you know, that, that sort of background music.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess my question is, is we, our Arts in the Park is canceled and we get, we don't have any of the music providers. So I guess that's my only question. I could understand, I can understand picnic in the park. But I mean, we canceled Arts in the Park per the CDC guidelines and the COVID. So that, that's the only thing I, I guess I don't understand.
Unless, I think, yeah, unless it's just something in thinking of July being Park and Rec Month, if we came up with a calendar and we just encouraged one of these or something like that where it's, you know, tonight's a good night to, you know, do, try a picnic in the park in the month of July. And it's not necessarily one day in time and we don't focus on the music piece so much. I, I think it goes back to our mission or goal of getting people out to the park and being outside is good for your mental health and wellbeing and just try something different. So I like, I think the picnic in the park piece is doable. And then maybe incorporating music if we feel like we are comfortable with that. Go ahead, Terry.
I like Tim's idea of maybe, maybe we could borrow Woody's speaker or if we have that big speaker still, we could just pipe in a little background music. And then it would be.
I would encourage because you wouldn't want, like Jason said, you wouldn't want it to be an event where they're going to gather all around the stage. You want it to be an event that they're just going to maybe bring lunch or buy a box lunch or whatever they do. Maybe they'll buy from our, our businesses, takeout and then sit up there. But I, I would hesitate too to have any kind of a name that people are going to want to all gather in front of the stage.
Yeah, so I think adding to that list, would it be in agreement to say picnic in the park? Whether it's just we encourage it at any city park, just we're encouraging people go out and have a picnic dinner in the park or picnic lunch in the park.
I agree.
I know Tim had his hand up earlier, so I want to hit Tim, but I also have a question.
I got through.
Okay, okay. Jamie, is there a way, like as we look at some of these things, I know that we have it within the budget, but one of the things I noticed when we solicited feedback, there were a lot of comments about, you know, the Walmarts and the Home Depots continuing to be open. Is there a possible opportunity here to maybe reach out to them to see if they would be willing to give back to the community or sponsor? You know, like one of these events or something.
Yeah, and I, I do, that's a good point. And I know that the Forest Lake Target is looking to do a volunteer activity and I've had that similar thought. So one thing that stood out right away was the Freeze Pop giveaway. Maybe that's something that can be sponsored and maybe Forest Lake Target or some other group can go to different parks to help distribute Freeze Pops. They're fairly inexpensive, but we'd probably go through, you know, quite a few of them, especially if we spread it out to multiple parks, which is what I would recommend we do from an access standpoint and also just so that we're keeping things spread out. We'd hope people will just go to one park to get their one Freeze Pop, but if they didn't, you know, so be it. So I think that and, you know, as I went through the spreadsheet, we looked at potential partners and opportunities. So there are a few of these that I feel like we could partner with other organizations to share resources and get these activities as efficiently as possible. So, and just I didn't really elaborate, but the We Are Parks and Rec, one idea I had for that was maybe having people submit a picture to the city in them, from something they've done at a city park or on the trails or lakes. Something that shows them having fun and maybe we could put a collage at the city hall or something that says We Are Parks and Rec and put pictures up just to show people using our parks and trails and the importance of that. I think they've been really important during this time of COVID-19 and also Lakeside Memorial Park was the home to a peaceful protest. So I think it kind of is a good time to show how important parks and trails and what we do is really important. So that was an idea I have for that one, so.
Can I make a motion for that? Uh, I'll make a motion for the July and try to get some things going with the farmer's market, drive-through, Freeze Pop giveaway and up to Jamie's discretion for the month of July and see what, see what we can come up in August.
A second.
Now, just a point of clarification, you're okay with the items on the August list or you want to see?
I know, I think, I think that looks good, but as Jamie was saying, as, as it gets closer, that things might change a little bit. So that's why I left it up to, 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 to that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Betty?
I just want to clarify that we added the picnic in the park to the list.
Correct.
That was going to be my question too. Was it limited to just those that you mentioned or was it going to be the, the?
And the picnic in the park, yep.
And then the only discretion disclaimer that I kind of am going to go back to is provided I can get through as much of this as I can and subject to change, but if, if I do anything, it'll be on this list and we'll do as much as we can as possible.
And if you need help, we're available and you have the subcommittee too as well. So just let us know how we can help and where we can be at what parks and when and.
Yeah, I think what might be, I've come pretty far in the farmer's market plans and can look, I'll take the rest of this week to look through that list. And then if there's certain things that you're particularly interested in, maybe what things you've commented on can maybe help with just, you know, if we break the activities down a little bit with one or two people just helping on one or two of them. That might be helpful to push the July items out a little quicker, just because we have a little shorter timeframe.
So we had a motion and I think who's, was that Tim Gary that seconded? Okay, do you want to do?
Terry Steenblock. Doug Ramseth.
Hi.
Tim Gary.
Hi.
Jason Steenblock.
Hi.
Karen Morehead.
Hi.
Tim Miller.
Hi.
Betty Guyer.
Hi.
All right, so that motion carries. And let's see, we were under five C, which was the park event permit and application, which was included in our packet.
So I will walk you guys through this one. This is our park event permit application for COVID-19. Oh, just kind of a little background again, as it relates to reservations and our normal park season. We will receive park event permit applications for things such as any event at the park for over 75 people. So you see a lot of weddings, you see the powerboat races, for example, and things like that. So as we've been navigating through COVID-19, one little thing at a time, we now know that we can have events at the park up to 250 people. However, provided that all of those guidelines of social distancing and all of the other requirements are met. So with that, I didn't, I just am really looking to see if there are any recommendations on how we may need to update this form to have it be more applicable to COVID-19, if someone would still be interested in a wedding with 75 or 100 people, for example. I know I've reached out to the powerboat races. They were looking to do their event August 3rd and 4th weekend. However, I, they're going to have the resources to make sure that spectators are complying with the guidelines. So partly discussion, partly some action to see, you know, what we do from here. Another thing that's different is normally if we had a wedding request, they might put all 75 people seated under the gazebo. However, that wouldn't allow for social distancing, so people are now with wedding requests looking to use more of the natural, like the green space in the park. And so, you know, one thought I have is do we add the requirement that they provide a diagram of how they're going to set up? Do we require them to provide a prepared, you know, preparedness plan on how they're going to have their event safely in compliance with the guidelines? So that's what I'm looking for tonight, just some conversation, how we would look at those bigger events that could be up to 250 people. And what additional, what changes or additional information, what should we be looking at getting from potential applications? So, and I will say, I talked to somebody today who has a wedding request in for October. And I have a couple other potential groups that would fall into this permit application request. So I've let them know that we're just navigating through this to see what information we would need from them to approve their request. And then lastly, all park event permit applications do come to the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission for on an individual basis. So you guys review each application that's submitted. So what is it that you might want to see in addition this to COVID-19? So with that, I can share that document if there's any questions or comments. Do you want me to share that permit application? Would anyone like to see that?
Yeah, I've got it here.
I like your idea of submitting a plan of how they're going to operate it. But I also like the idea of having people be able to get married and have a spot. So if it's open to 250 and they can supply a plan of how they're going to separate, I, I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, I can get behind that too. I mean, would there, I'm just looking across, would there be just a simple statement that says you have to abide by the most current guidelines based on group gatherings outside or however that's worded in the CDC guideline?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. If it's just adding a, by signing this, you know, by submitting this park event permit application, you agree to comply with all current, up-to-date guidelines. And then also submit a diagram or a drawing of how you, where in the park you plan to use and what that'll look like. I mean, would that be sufficient for you and information that you'd want to receive as you're reviewing a request?
I think so.
I think so.
Jamie, could we include when they, if we get the diagram and the information from them on the CDC's website, they have a piece about visiting parks and it's got a do's and a don'ts.
Yes.
And some of those obviously wouldn't apply to a wedding, but the concepts are some of the, could we weed some of those out and say, you know?
Ones that are applicable?
Yeah, send that back to them with their, you know, you've been approved. As a reminder, these are CDC guidelines you'll need to ensure you adhere to. Remaining six feet apart, you know, if there's food, blah, or hand sanitizer at the, because, you know, they talk about hand sanitizer at the entrance point. And I mean, if we could just pull out a few of those and send it back with them, then we've kind of doubled, tripled.
Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
The other thing is, is I mean, if it was going to be a wedding or something, make sure there's no alcohol in the park.
Yep. Do, and I don't know if we need to like have a list. Do you guys want to go as far as having, here's the checklist of things you need to do to have your wedding here? Or is it, leave it up to them that you're going to say you're compliant and you, it's up to them to follow through?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so we could have simply, so this, the park event permit application for COVID-19, if I updated it with some form of disclaimer that, as we mentioned, and then including a diagram of what parts of the park and how you're going to set up your event. If you submit that, that would be fair for all of you guys when you start seeing these applications come in.
Sounds good.
So then I guess just if anyone wants, if there's a motion.
I make a motion to do exactly as you just said. With the checklist and, not the checklist, but with the diagram of where they're going to put their event. You, you can phrase it much better, but I'll make a motion to your effect.
So I got a second from Jason and first, so Karen.
Any discussion? All right, you want to take?
Doug, you're on mute.
I have that clock going all the time, so I have to mute.
The clock.
Is there, is there any liability on the part of the city if we just you know, leave it up to them to comply and we haven't told them what the compliance requirements are? I guess we're saying you have to comply with the CDC guidelines, but if they don't and people come down with the virus and track it back to that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good question because I, I think a lot of people or businesses are faced with that same thought of what's the liability and the risk on you, you know, using facilities or going to different businesses and whatnot. I think wouldn't hurt for me to provide links to some of these guidelines. So the Stay Safe Minnesota, I can certainly send them that, which is a really a main deal for planning an event. I mean, it's included in the packet and it's nine pages of content. Some of that information from the CDC and the MDH, so.
Because you have with the applications and like a sentence, it says that, you know, we've read, reviewed, received, reviewed the, the CDC requirements. And by signing, we're, we're taking full, full responsibility for having read these and, and enforcing them. You know, put the onus back on the, the people with the party rather than the city.
Good idea.
If you did that, you, I, I wonder if people would even necessarily know where to go when they're filling out that application.
I guess I was just thinking Jamie said something about that she had a link or had something like that. And that, that way then they'd be given that link or information and have them take the initiative to check it out for themselves. And then they would then sign off by saying that we've read it, we reviewed it, read it, agree with it, and we're signing.
Could we defer to the city's legal if they think something should be added to that effect that we give Jamie the discretion to add what city legal thinks would be appropriate?
I think that's a good idea.
So just.
Other discussion, because we, I know we have a motion on the floor right now.
Do we need a motion amended to include that piece of consulting with legal for me?
So Karen, I would make a friendly amendment to your original motion, which would be to allow Jamie, have Jamie review it with legal and incorporate any recommendations legal has.
That would be fine. I would hope that we wouldn't have any over and above the others, but if you, you know, think there might be one or two, I don't see that as a problem.
So then we need a second to the amended motion. So then we need a second to the amended motion.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion on that? Okay, here we know.
Terri Steenblock?
Aye.
Doug Graham, Seth?
Aye.
Tim Gary?
Aye.
Jason Steenblock?
Aye.
Karen Moorhead?
Aye.
Tim Miller?
Aye.
Betty Guyer?
Aye.
Okay, so we are on to number six on the agenda and these were just discussion points. Six A is the public beach.
All right, so there's no supporting documents tonight on this discussion item. But did want to circle back on this public beach topic from our last meeting as we were deciding on how and what to open for park facilities. So our public beach down at Lakeside Memorial Park is open and has been for a few weeks now. And there's nothing in the CDC guidelines that has any concern about the virus trans transmitting through water. Minneapolis Park and Rec Board actually originally closed beaches for the summer when COVID first hit. However, they are opening their beaches again. And really the biggest thing, I did consult with Washington County Public Health and their biggest thing was just having beaches open is fine, but the only concern is just the number of people it may draw. And then how many people you have that maybe are not social distancing well. So the discussion tonight is just, you know, your input or feedback on potential, you know, monitoring the situation at the beach. And if any point in time that we feel it's being overcrowded and social distancing isn't being followed, you know, what's just your opinion or take on potentially, you know, some communication efforts? Or, you know, is there any point in time where the public beach may have to close if we have too many people coming to that small space and not. So just a discussion tonight, just some, wanted to kind of get your input on what you would like to see or recommend. If, you know, if it becomes overcrowded or social distancing isn't taking place. So with that, I'll just turn it over and see if you have any thoughts on that and.
Amy, do we have any signage that would say these are the, you know, we're proud or we're happy to have the beach open and would like to continue to do that. So please be responsible and follow the guidelines. And then if we have a ranger on duty, he, and he can see a problem, he could go over and say, you know, it's written right here that we have to abide by this. So I don't know. Do we have signage out there now?
Not specific to the beach yet. So I, I also had that same thought of, you know, if and what we can put out that talks more specifically about just the beach. Because we've done things for playgrounds and ball fields and things like that.
Right.
Wouldn't it be a similar situation though? You could have a couple of people that are together, but they're in the same household. And so is it the same reminder that we did with the other parks?
It's similar. Yeah, social distancing is the key with public beaches. Because it's the close proximity to others is more of their concern. So if you end up getting, it's a five degree day and everyone goes to the beach. And there's just, the beach is packed and people say, oh, well, I'm still going to swim and hang out at the beach, even though that they're sitting right next to somebody else. I don't know that we've had that problem yet. So I certainly could make up a specific beach, you know, the beach will remain open, provided that social distancing is maintained at all times. And we continue to evaluate and monitor throughout the next few weeks.
I think people are good if you give them a chance.
Yeah.
I agree. I know we've been there quite a bit and when we've been there, there hasn't been an issue with too much congregating there and, and in all technicality. How long is it you're supposed to wash your hands, even if you don't have soap? And you're in the lake. Isn't that water?
Yeah, there's no concerns with, and I think it's, it's nice to keep it open. I know pools are, some are opening, some are not opening. I think it's a nice thing to have against people downtown and maybe they're going to go support the businesses. But I just want to make sure that we're doing it safely, that's remaining safe. And we aren't there, we do have park ranger staff most of the time. You know, there's, there can be some level of enforcement. I'd like to try to see it stay open, but just also wanted you guys to know and be aware that overcrowded beach situation won't be like a good situation. And that goes back to liability questions of, you know, is the city liable? If someone would pick it up because we kept the beach open, people weren't compliant. So I don't think that's the case. I think it's really up to the people.
I think if we see an issue with it, then we make the decision. If there becomes an issue, then it gets closed or situation changes. And it needs to be revisited, we revisit it.
Okay, so everyone is just, you know, kind of a discussion update that it's open. And as long as you guys are comfortable with that, I do think it's good to have it open and hope that people use it safely and smartly.
Yeah, if you can just, you know, ask the rangers to, if they see it continually getting abused, then we can discuss it again.
Go ahead, Jason.
Actually, I have one comment regards to the lake. I've noticed some power loading on the, on the, on the ramps. I don't know, we need to get more signage out there. Because that power loading is just moving that sand. Make sure people know that we don't want power loading on those, on all of our ramps.
I will check to see what the signage is and if we need bigger signage or more signage. And we could put some, maybe add some reminders elsewhere. We do some updates there.
Thank you.
Can I ask what, what that is? Since I don't have a boat, I don't have a clue to what you're talking about, power, something.
So power loading is, is when, when you back your vehicle and your trailer into the water, it's easier to use the motor to push you up onto the, onto the trailer. Well, when you're, when you're doing that, you're pushing all the sand away from, and making mounds in the, into the, into the lake.
Oh.
So it's, what you want to do is you just want to get the boat in there and then winch it up.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's another one that I think we had a complaint or request on. So I think if we can put a reminder there, because to try to fill it would be pointless. So if we can make bigger signs or some reminders, that would be good.
I will check into that. I made a note.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on the beach? All right, so we have the Q three work plan and Jamie, I had a couple things on this one too.
Sure, I'll just kind of introduce it quick and then turn it over. So included in the packet, if you got a chance to look at that on the link. This is kind of more of a workshop item in a sense, so we can hopefully get to however many, you know, five or six, seven goals we want for our Q three is coming up soon. So I updated the document and what I did, I removed the two that we got completed, which was identify new management for Castlewood Golf Course and update the agreement for the Fenway Athletic Complex. And then I also removed update policies for arts in the park vendors. Because I feel like with, there's other work that would be more of a priority right now than that. And we can circle back to that in maybe Q four, so it's ready for next year. So the other ones listed, most of them, some of them are carried over then from the Q one. And I did add on a couple new ones, which are number six and seven. Those ones I added, which is for discussion, but identify one park improvement project to complete. So my thought here was nothing, you know, elaborate and extensive. We've talked about doing some things at some of the smaller parks that don't have anything. Where maybe that's a smaller investment that's on that list of things that we should get done. Maybe we can pick one of those and get one of those moving in the right direction so that we have. What's that? And then the other one was develop a ten-year vision for Forest Lakes, Parks, and Lakes. And that was again from city administrator and council, where they want to really provide their vision for the, the Parks Department. So I don't know specifically what that next step is for that, because that's kind of being led by our city administrator. But whatever, let's do some work towards that plan in Q three, once I get more direction from our city administrator. So Karen, I'll let you take it over, because I know you had some comments on it as well.
I, I probably had more questions than comments. I was wondering if we're actually ready to talk about this now? Or if, I, I was going to ask the rest of the team, what, if they were ready to talk about it? And if not, what additional information they needed so that we could pull together the next plan? I, again, do we leave it? Do we carry over these things here? I mean, when I looked at the list, we started belts. And we never, you know, is that one where we at least get back together and figure out what a scaled down version of belts looks like? Or at least be able to wrap that one up? I don't know, I guess I wanted to have more conversations about, are you ready to talk about it? And or if not, what information do you need? And should we just put it on the next, the July fifteenth meeting? And make that, if we can, the sole purpose of that meeting. So more questions than answers for the rest.
Yeah, no, that's, that's really good. And I, and I think this is, if it's kind of used as a workshop-like item, you know, maybe we can talk, spend a couple minutes just talking through. Give me some direction and then the one that would come to the July meeting would be more in a final format for approval. So I think it's a good thing to bring up. And also looking at, you know, realistic with, you know, if we're going to put out some of these community events coming July and August, you know, be shifting, you know, time and resources to getting those kind of in that community events and programs piece. So that will take up a good proportion of my time in the next few weeks. So just looking back at Q one and Q two, it took a lot to get that golf course piece figured out and then even Fenway this year. So how, you know, do we, for just one quarter, three months, you know, how do we just look at two or three goals? So we're not, so we just have our focus on just a couple things and get those done versus having seven goals for a quarter. So I carried some over and I put a couple new on. So if, if we were to kind of focus in on two or three, you know, is there any conversation tonight on, from just what you see quickly? Terri mentioned Belts Park and I'm sure others would agree with that, which right now is just listed as goal five. That one, I think, does make sense to really start looking at again, because we've got a lot of the work done and it might align with the ten-year plan. Work that needs to be figured out there.
I know the Rotary would be very happy because they're still sitting on their fundraising money that they have donated. And it comes up every once in a while as to what, what's happening with the plan. And I don't know if you've ever got back with Father Bodine. So I would love to have a conversation, you know, little larger, longer format to kind of go through again and see what it is we've, we really have to do yet or what's been done.
I would recommend, if I was to look at the goals, goal number one, we have update policies for park facility reservations. And I know we did a little bit of that, but I would recommend backburnering that. That's my new term of the day. And, and do that in conjunction with, you know, we talked about getting some technology that allowed us to enhance that process and the potential of additional staff. So maybe if we put that one on the back burner and we have that technology piece, we would have the ability to come up, integrate those two. So that is just my thought on that one.
That's fair.
I have thoughts and ideas on all of them, but I'm going to pause and see.
Well, I mean, if we can, I think that's helpful. And if people kind of agree with that, I think we're, we talked tonight about how we're going to navigate through our park facilities for this year. So that could be Q four, Q one of next year. So I think that makes sense to table for now, back burner it. And then develop and implement a sponsorship program. I just, you know, I kept it on there as a carryover to talk about. But really, I feel like given the state of the economy and the business impact that we've had, I feel like even if we put the time into create a sponsorship package right now, would we be prepared in the next six to twelve months to use that and seek out sponsorships for our programs? So I don't know that that's the most of our priority right now. But budget season is coming up, so maybe one of our Q three things should be budget requests, because that's looking at CIP. That's looking at what you guys might want to do. And I think that's something that we should put on here for sure. I can't, I'm just having a hard time believing it's mid-June, so you lose sight a little bit of what's up. I mean, but talking through it, I think the budget's a big piece for part of Q three. So we can at least set the framework for twenty-one.
I have a question just on the
Yeah.
The seasonal staff piece. You were helping me remember what that was in reference to there.
Yeah, I think we had looked into, we had the communications and recreation person approved by city council. And the start date was supposed to be July one. That has been on hold from COVID-related activities. So I think we also had budget to bring on somebody very, you know, part-time to help with some of this rec programming, which now is not the most relevant time to necessarily bring somebody on. Certainly would be helpful to get through some of these programs and activities in the next few months. But maybe if our budget supported it. So.
The clock is better.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
No problem.
So that I don't think is anything that's like a very difficult thing or necessarily a need right now.
Okay, then with the maintenance items, was that a, was that something we were going to ask Dave and them to do, to look at as they're going through these parts? Or was that something that we're going to take from the community feedback?
We were going to take from community feedback, so that would be like purchasing tables, different park amenities and things that we could potentially purchase and put out this year.
So we had that spreadsheet that was kind of a maintenance spreadsheet. We had talked about, so updating that with items for community feedback or if we saw things in parks that needed to be repaired. Or I do think it would be good as well for Dave to put down the things that they've done on that list. Because I think at the end of the year, when we're looking at the investment and the impact on the parks, that helps tell the story at least.
Yeah, I think that yeah, I don't have that document open, but that spreadsheet, list of maintenance tasks that we could look at. And so do we want to, for conversation and just to kind of move forward, so I get to a little bit more of a final version next meeting? The current ones that are listed as goal one, two, and three, scratch those now. Add the budget in some regard, the twenty-twenty-one budget review is, make our record. So the goal would be complete recommendations for the twenty-twenty-one Parks, Trails and Lakes, you know, Parks programs budget. Second goal would be, you know, keeping the Belts Park redesign project, analyze next steps in a more cost-effective approach. And then do we have a third one that kind of ties in maintenance, park improvement projects? I feel like we should make some movement on putting out some more benches or fixing something or adding a swing set or equipment somewhere, at least research some options for that, that we could bring forward with some pricing.
I would both that with the maintenance end of things and then you're, you're at a goal of number six. Identify some, I feel like we need to, we need to do something.
Right, I agree.
A lot of requests, I see a lot of the bad. A lot of requests, I see a lot of the basketball courts, I see dog parks. Some of these things can be done, I feel like, you know, relatively inexpensively that we can show, you know, show something's getting done too. So I think for me, those two items would also get pushed up that list that we could, we could try to pick some of that off and, and get some things done.
Jamie, we had a request for a small piece of equipment at Bayview. I think it was we had originally taken out, maybe looking at, I know we had the Bayview, we've had the basketball courts. There was a couple parks and I can't, I can't remember and I don't have it in front of me, where we had no benches, that we talked about the possibility of adding some benches. Could we take a look at, could we do a goal of, like you have written there? Identifying one park improvement and maintenance, park and maintenance improvements, maybe combine the two of them together? And then, you know, because to me, a bench would maybe be a maintenance thing, but adding a swing set would be more of a park improvement. Could we, could we look at those requests we've gotten? Combine, combine the two goals into one and look at some of those requests?
Yeah, and that, I, I think that's doable. And combine those into one goal. And I'll look at those requests and I can summarize those for our July meeting so that in July, we can look at that a little further. And I think that we could, you know, be physically, being fiscally responsible, put in, do a smaller project, $10,000 or $15,000, you know, whether it's bay park equipment or some tables and swing set at North Shore Circle Park. I think to Tim's point, I think we do need to show that we are physically doing something as well. So I think that would be good. I think maybe let's move the ten, develop tenure, the vision to maybe a Q4 once we get a little more direction. So I think that can wait a little bit.
So Jamie, are you getting any direction from your boss as to whether or not we should be cutting budgets? And if, and if you're not getting that, making sure that we do spend our capital budget and get, get all of the projects that we can afford to do within the budget, get them completed. So it may not be, you know, one park, maybe we do two parks with, with the equipment, new equipment.
No, that's a good question. If you're referring to the 2020 budget, not indicated that, you know, we won't, you need to cut spending or anything like that. City council had a workshop and special meeting last night where they talked a little bit about some CARES Act funding that the City of Forest Lake received. And I know that they're going to start talking about that more tomorrow. As to what are some of those reimbursable expenses? And so like, for example, if we're covering the cost of maintenance at Fenway because of COVID-related issues, you know, we'll be able to figure out what we'll get from that CARES Act. So I think July would be a good time to look at where our budgets at and what we have left to spend so that we can complete some of those projects if the funding's allowed. Jason?
Along with the maintenance at Lakeside, we do have that cement that is kind of upheaving on the, on the picnic shaded areas. And I mean, I guess along with that is somehow if we could make those fabric shades into more of a permanent structure.
Yeah, I think those are listed on that list of maintenance tasks. So when I look at that, I'll make sure. We can look at that list a little closer and start making some of those projects in the works for this year.
Okay.
Because our next meeting is still at a good July 15th. So that still positions us well to have plenty of time to get through some improvements and get some new amenities out. And given a summer where there's not a lot going on, even if it's as simple as adding a new expression swing or two to different parks. Those are the swings where you can swing with your child, just something different that might be exciting for people. Those zip lines are pretty fun. And like, if you just, you know, it's not like we need to add a whole new playground, but is there a spot for a zip line? You know, just near a playground that's already existing? Or I think just looking at some options of what can we add to city parks for some improvements? Especially in a time where people can't do a whole lot this summer, so.
So can I go back to my original question? What do you guys need to have the discussion at the next meeting? What would be helpful for you guys?
Is that including the Belts Park questions?
Yeah.
But, yeah, as we think about the quarterly work plan discussion, what, what do you need that would be helpful for you to be able to have that conversation?
A list of some of the projects that, capital projects that we have identified where we may be able to install some new equipment.
Probably updated budget reports. Go ahead, Buddy.
Kind of along that same line, but just being newer, I don't have those original documents.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm kind of at a loss. So that would be helpful.
I'm happy to do that. Any other?
And no, just a summary. I mean, if you can get like for the belts, for instance, if we can get a summary with where we're, we kind of ended it last. I mean, that'd be helpful just to have a deer, you know, too early, I mean.
Summary of where belts ended, okay.
And then Jamie, I know we're putting the 10-year piece to the next quarter, but if there's any update from Patrick on that, that would be helpful just to, I mean, 10-year plan is a pretty significant plan. So just for the next meeting, if he has any thoughts or the council has any thoughts?
Yeah, I think that should be one that kind of stays there, but knowing it's going to carry through several iterations.
Okay, so that's helpful. I'll keep it on there. So from what we talked about, it looks like we have about four goals for the next quarter. And then I made a list here of the things to provide prior to the next meeting that you guys can review. I did add budget reports as well, park dedication, balance, and just our 2020 general fund bill update report. List of projects of capital, list of the capital projects we've identified, original documents for Betty, summary, summary of where Belts Park ended and then the 10-year plan updates from Patrick. Go ahead.
An old topic, the clock that we were given?
Yes.
Is there, is it up and I haven't seen it? Or is it sitting in a storage booth somewhere?
So Dave Adams with Public Works is working, he has the electricity, the electrical run. And I believe he installed the base and he's working directly with them on the installation piece, being that it's more of a maintenance-related item. And I just was being the messenger in the middle and so connect to because maintenance is not my forte and easier to just connect them. So I've seen that, I know that the electrical was done just around when COVID started, just after the, we had the nice spring, so they got that done then. So I don't know that it's put together and up yet, but I know that it's really pretty close.
Good.
I'll find out from Dave where that's at.
So then we have staff updates left. Jamie, did you want to just give a quick farmer's market update?
Yeah, so just, Farmer's Market's going to start on, got pushbacks. It's going to start on Tuesday, July 6th. And long story short, as things continue to change with COVID, I originally was going to have it at the city hall parking lot just so I could control 10 people or less. Now we're open to, you know, some of the restrictions have changed. So it's going to be out at Fenway Park this year in the parking lot. There's an area with over about 90 stalls, parking stalls that provides a lot of space. Unfortunately, the baseball and softball summer season's been canceled. So there will not be games out there like we're used to. They're going to hope for a fall season. So it allows us to use that space out at Fenway. So I think it'll work really well. I'm just going to really quickly have a diagram to kind of show you what I am thinking for the parking space. So this is the first entrance as you come into Fenway. It's the north end of the lot, so right across the street is the ice arena. So where you see this red here is what I'm thinking to just put some cones or stanchions out to block traffic through here so that we have this whole area for farmer's market vendors. People could come in and then there's quite a bit of parking, easy to access. And we can just control where people are entering and exiting the market. And then we also have the opportunity to expand on this if we want to add some craft vendors as restrictions change or, or whatnot. But I did have some challenges just because produce vendors aren't ready. Some vendors chose not to participate on short notice. So, and their participation is low, but I still think it's good to have. And I hope that we can get it going and continue to expand as we move through the summer and the fall. So that is my update on that. Is there any questions on that?
There were a couple of comments. People were actually excited to have it at a different location. So I just thought I'd pass that along. I did notice a couple of comments about that.
Yeah, I think it provides us an opportunity to elaborate and expand a little bit.
Going to bring citizens out to an area they may have not ever been out to before. That's always good.
So with that, the next update is the Facility Use Agreement with the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association. Just an update, I briefly mentioned this earlier in our regular meeting portion. But the Facility Use Agreement did get approved by city council on, I think it was June 9th meeting. Just prior to that, there were things changing quickly with whether or not there'd be a softball, baseball season, lost revenue, lost revenue from gambling with the bars and restaurants closed. So the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association's been impacted significantly on revenue to support their programs. And we're concerned about signing a contract with, you know, not sure if they'd be able to pay a maintenance fee. So through city leaders, it was just decided that given the COVID-19 and the situation that we are faced with and that there may not be a season, which there isn't, that we would not charge a maintenance fee just for this 2020 contract. So it's a one-year contract, it's going to expire at the end of this year. And then we'll revisit, moving forward, what that's going to look like. But however, there was a lot of good feedback on the actual agreement that it's written well. And hopefully we can kind of carry that forward next year. So that's where it would happen kind of with city leadership and city council, but it is approved. And if you don't have the most up-to-date version, it was in the June 9th council meeting, but I'm happy to send you a link to that, June 8th, I'm sorry, June 8th. Otherwise, I can send you a link to, to view that document. So, so that is done.
That was a lot of work. Thank you. I know there was a lot of back and forth and we had a good meeting. Thank you for putting together multiple versions of that, so thanks.
No problem.
All right, so any updates from any of us? Any commissioner updates?
Oh, I have one if just a minute, that Commissioner Guyer has just retired. And so we can count on her doing most of the major work that we have to do now because she's got lots of time.
Lots, lots of time.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
I, I have plenty for you to do.
Yeah, you mentioned that internship unpaid, but.
Yes.
Day two under my belt, so we're good.
Go ahead, Doug.
Last spring, the City of Forest Lake gave the Clear Lake Association $15,000 from the Marina fees that were in the lake improvement bucket. And we received $15,000 from the state or from the Washington County to do a whole lake treatment to eradicate Eurasian water milfoil from Clear Lake. It was remarkably successful. This year's vegetation survey, they could not find a stem of Eurasian water milfoil in the lake, so.
Oh.
That's really good.
Amazing.
The association paid $17,000, the city paid 15, and the county paid 15. So it was a good partnership and a great result.
Great news.
That's awesome.
Thanks, Doug.
Anybody else? Be looking for a motion to adjourn then?
I moved out, we adjourned.
I heard Tim Miller, was that right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor, can we just say all in favor, raise your hand?
That's fine.
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone, all right. Well, thank you guys. You have a great evening. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work, Jamie.
Thank you, guys. See you soon.